4:45, called order, special meeting, City Council, City Clear Lake. Today Thursday, June 14, 2018, at 4:45 PM. And first order of business, we'll turn to the staff report and City Manager Grayfoles.
Thank you Mayor, now we will turn it over to our Public Works Director.
Good afternoon Mayor, City Council. I'm here tonight to look for an amendment to the contract for design services for Highlands Harbor, Harbor Lane Caving Rehabilitation Project. We've got to the point where we might have enough funding to do the whole project, so I need to do some engineering on it and get the design, get it ready to go. We need to be prepared. If the contracts come in and they're a lot lesser than our budgeted amount, I'd like to add those into the project, see how they're going to be in that area. So what we have here is, what you see here is for additional $15,085 and with an authorized City Manager to approve an additional 25%, which is roughly around $3,700 for additional work if we run into any loopholes. So what staff recommends, that the council authorized City Manager to amend the contract with California Engineering Company in the amount of $15,085.00 and authorized City Manager to approve up to 25% for additional unforeseen contract amendments.
Thank you Mr. Aaron for that. And if I can open this up to the public for any comments? And receiving none, I'd like to bring it back to Council for further deliberation and action. Councilmember Overton?
We'll get to a little practice here before everybody comes in, right? So does that make me say you might have money? What does that mean?
Well, when we did our PSR, and I have our engineer's estimate, from what we're getting today, we might have enough. We're going to do Harbor Lane for sure, but if we, if the contracts come in cheaper and we've got enough money to do Harbor Lane, I'd like to pick up Marine Court and Anchor Drive as well, those are two off streets in that area out there. So while we've got the contractors, I'd rather get all that area done, rather than just get Highlands Harbor done.
Okay, I agree. So what we would probably do is, when we bid it out, this would be unalternate?
Right.
And so assuming that the amount comes in, an amount that we have money for, then we would just go ahead and do that.
Okay, great.
Councilmember Kramer?
We have some idea what Harbor Lane is going to ballpark, what it's going to cost?
Well, we've got our class estimates for it, but we don't know what the contracts are going to come in at. I just want to be prepared. I'm going to be doing these, the engineering on these anyways, for future projects, so I'm just wanting to be ahead of the game, and just have it done in case we do have savings and we can go back in there and finish it during that construction.
Okay, so you don't know what Harbor Lane is?
Yeah, I don't have it off the top of my head. I have to go back and look.
Okay.
So these improvements for these two projects right here, we've roughed it out now, and actually roughed them out and has brought that number to me, it's going to be about $60,000, $60,000 to $100,000.
So entertain a motion.
Very, I'll entertain a motion. I'd like to authorize the City Manager to amend the contract with the California Engineering Company for an additional $15,085 and authorize the City Manager to approve up to 25% for additional unforeseen contract amendments.
Okay.
Shall we go for a roll call, Louie? All right. First, we have a first instance by Councilmember Overton and a second by Councilmember Kramer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. Yeah, and Mayor Sabatier is absent today. And, 603? And I'd like to call a regular meeting in City Council, City Clear Lake and Redevelopment Successor Agency Order, Thursday, June 14, 2018. And if I can have a roll call?
Councilmember Overton?
Here.
Councilmember Kramer?
Here.
Councilmember Bennett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Here.
And Mayor Sabatier is absent.
And if we could start off by asking Mr. Councilmember Nick Bennett to lead us in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands my nation and ground indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And if everybody remain standing, and if Bob Myers would lead us in the invocation this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Dear heavenly Father, I thank you for this opportunity to take your guidance, Lord, in making decisions on what's right for our fair city here. Lord, and I thank you for the just and fair judgments of this council, Lord. In Jesus Christ I pray, amen.
Thank you. Mr. Folsom, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I'd like to make motion to accept the agenda.
Two seconds.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So this, let's start off, we have a presentation?
Close session.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, was there any action taken in close session?
Mr. Vice Mayor, there's no action taken, or no reportable action for close session.
Thank you so much. So if I can have Diane Watson and Stephen Walski join me up front at the podium for a presentation.
Whereas our nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people, but the fulfillment for this promise has been long in coming for many Americans. Some of the most inspiring moments in our history have arisen from the various civil rights movements that have brought our group, brought one group after another, from the margins to the mainstream of American society. And whereas in the movement towards equal rights for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, LGBT people, the historic turning point occurred on June 28, 1969, in New York City, with the onset of the Stonewall Riots. During these riots, LGBT citizens rose up and resisted police harassment that arose out of discriminatory criminal laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. In the four decades since, civil rights for LGBT people have grown substantially. The LGBT pride celebrations have taken place around the country every June to commemorate the beginning of the Stonewall Riots. And whereas California has been a leader in advancing civil rights for the LGBT citizens, and while further progress is needed, it is important to recognize and celebrate the substantial gains that have been achieved. Now, therefore, the City Council, the City of Clear Lake does hereby proclaim June 2018 a lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender Prada in Clear Lake, and calls upon its citizens to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists and celebrate the diversity of our community. Dated June 14, 2018, signed by me, Vice Mayor.
Thank you Phil.
And if you'd like to say anything?
What I'd like to say is, this is an honor, you know, every year. Super appreciated. And I want to say it's an honor, not just for us, but for all citizens, so not just LGBT people. So thank you so much. Thank you so much.
On behalf of the, my name's Stephen Walski, for the record, and on behalf of the LGBT community, and for all people of diversity, brown, yellow, black, and white, it is a great honor to accept this presentation and recognition of Pride Month. And we're having our first Pride event at Tatanka Land on Saturday from 5 to 10. And we're hoping that this will be an annual event, and maybe next year we'll have Austin Park. We don't know how many people are expected on Saturday, and we'll try to keep things in orderly, Chief of Police, I know that you're aware. We don't know how many to expect. There are people coming up from Sonoma County and from other surrounding counties to support our Pride Month here in Lake County. So we'll try to keep things orderly. And I've even talked to the owner of the local cab company and encouraged them to be available, because people will be drinking, and we'll encourage people to take the cab and not drive. So thank you, City Council, for this great honor and recognition of Pride Month. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can we add one thing? I've been asked to mention that the proceeds for this year's Pride event, being sponsored by the Lions Club, is to benefit the fireworks display on the 4th of July. Also, maybe I should even mention that I will be singing the National Anthem at the parade. So that's a great honor for me. Thank you.
And for the next item on the agenda, I'll turn it over to Melissa Swanson.
Honorable Councilmembers and Vice Mayor, the item is a presentation of a joint project fire prevention video. This video presented is the first of a series of three videos focusing on fire prevention. The video is a joint effort between the City of Clear Lake, the Clear Lake Police Department, the Lake County Fire Protection District, and Lake County PEG TV to create awareness for all residents on how to reduce the threat of fires and what to do in case of a fire. The video shown tonight is, as I said, the first of three, and focuses on the code enforcement aspect and weed abatement, and is voiced by Code Enforcement Officer Steve Felder.
Five major wildfires that have burned throughout the county over the past four years, the last being the Sulphur Fire, which destroyed over 120 dwellings, mostly located within the city of Clear Lake. The Clear Lake Police Department Code Enforcement Division and the Lake County Fire Protection District are joint forces in enforcing overgrown vegetation and fire codes within the city. Now through July 1st, we are encouraging all property owners to voluntarily eliminate potential fire hazards from their properties. This includes cutting and removing all dead or dry overgrown vegetation and brush which exceeds four inches in height. Removing dead or decaying trees or limbs and cutting back all overgrown trees a minimum of six feet from the ground. Additionally, property owners should make sure combustible items and fuels are stored safely and appropriately. Firewood must be stored at least five feet from each property line and any occupied dwelling. Gases and other flammable liquids must be stored in a cool, improperly vented area out of direct sunlight. We would also like to ask, when using a weed eater mower or other motorized trimmer, please do so in the early morning or evening hours when the temperatures are cooler. Using these types of equipment in the middle of the day can be a fire hazard itself. Beginning July 1st, the City of Clear Lake Code Enforcement and the Lake County Fire Protection District will actively investigate fire hazard complaints as well as proactively looking for fire hazard in residential communities. Property owners and tenants who have failed to take the precautionary measures to reduce the opportunity of a fire on their property will be issued a criminal citation and required to eliminate the existing fire hazard. Now is the time for all of us to do our part in preventing another major wildfire in our community. Be responsible, proper, and a good neighbor.
So this is a great tool we will use annually and throughout the fire season. It fits within goal number two, objective number one of the strategic plan, which is to make Clear Lake a statistically safer city by educating the public. The videos will be shown on TV8, the city's website, and social media. The remaining videos will show at the next council meeting.
And next for the consent agenda, would anybody like to, would any council member like to pull an item? Hearing any, would any member of the public like to comment on anything on the consent agenda? Please step forward.
I just would like to mention that there's a lot of dead trees along the highway, to the rate near my house.
We're actually, we're asking about the items that are listed on the consent agenda right now. And you're right, I did skip completely over public comment. We'll go ahead and move forward with the consent agenda and we'll go back to public comment. All right. So if I can, a motion to accept the consent agenda as is?
Motion to accept the consent items as presented?
A motion? A motion and a second, and all in favor?
All aye.
Aye. And then let's go ahead and move back to public comment, we'll just skip right over, excuse me for that. And I do have some people that have turned in slips for a public comment. So the first one on my list is, let's see, Mary Lou Barrett? Barrett?
Yes, Erin.
Now, I'll remind you, Louie, you have three minutes for the comment, and we can't actually return any commentary because it's a violation of the law.
I'm here to express my shock and anger at the passing over of Tim Selly for Chief of Police. I have known him for three years and seen him in all different kinds of circumstances in front of the public. His grace, his thoughtfulness, his intelligence, his way of dealing with people from all walks of life has impressed me no end. And if I can relate to things that were in the recent police annual reports, in 2016, the comment was, "I want to thank Acting Chief Selly and the entire department for their fine efforts in keeping Clear Lake safe in 2016." In 2017, the mayor said, "The council is very pleased and grateful to how the dedication and work aspect shown by Acting Chief of Police and interim Chief of Police Selly." I want to know why these kind of statements were made in January 2016, 2017, 2018, and five months later you pass him over and the whole police department is looking at you saying, "If you can't be loyal to him, why should we be loyal to Clear Lake?"
All right, thank you. Next, we have Martha Foltz. And again, just reiterate, you have three minutes and we cannot comment.
It is my personal opinion that you, the City Council, have made a huge mistake in not making Lieutenant Tim Selly the Chief of Police. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Linda Rickel, is that her name? Any, any, you have three minutes to comment and we can't, we can't comment.
Thank you. I agree with the other people about Tim Selly. Everybody respects and admires him, and I can't understand why he would have passed him over when he's done an excellent job for two and a half years. That's all I have to say. You should reconsider.
Thank you. And then next, we have Linda Conway.
I'd like to register my disgust with what you've done to us relative to a police chief. Obviously, the public meeting where everybody was indicating what they wanted in a chief was nothing but a sham. I'm sorry that you don't give a damn about the people in this county, and this city, and I'm very sorry for you.
All right. But I have no more slips here. Would anybody else like to make any fellow comments? Seeing none, we will move forward. So for the next order of business, we're going to turn it over to City Manager Grayfolesum.
Thank you Vice Mayor. I am actually going to turn this over to our Director of Finance for the vehicle lease program.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Harris, members of the council, Allen Flora, Finance Director. So at our budget workshop that was held in May, we discussed with your council the status of our vehicle fleet, and however, over 40 vehicles have an average age of just over nine and a half years, and that with the way the city has been funding replacement, wasn't a lot of money to go around, and so in many cases, replacement was handled by actually buying used vehicles with that money to stretch those dollars a little bit more. But the result of that was the condition of the fleets actually getting worse over time. And so we looked at a number of options and are bringing to you tonight an option, which is to execute a governmental lease program with Enterprise Fleet Management. And so this program would allow us to begin an organized replacement of our fleet, maximizing our cash flow opportunities by trading an annual payment for fleet services versus having to fund all of the upfront costs of a new vehicle. Enterprise Fleet Management provides fleet management services to make recommendations to the city on available options, make sure we receive the best rebates and bids through state procurement contracts, et cetera. We feel like that this step would increase our employee safety, minimize our maintenance costs and our fuel costs, which have been growing over the last several years significantly, and additionally reduce the amount of time that city staff have to spend on procurement disposal and equipping our vehicles. So the way the program works is most vehicles are a 60-month lease. We work with Enterprise to see if it makes sense to have a slightly shorter term for pursuit vehicles. But they do provide a full maintenance program for those vehicles, and that's handled, or can be handled through our existing local repair shops. We just have to get them up there, right, as a vendor through Enterprise, and we can still drop those vehicles off at our local shops, and they'll just work with Enterprise on that. So the maintenance program excludes tire and brakes, make sure to point that out. So there is a pretty extensive packet here, hopefully you've had time to review the sort of lease synopsis that was put together by Enterprise. This is kind of a proposed replacement program. We have flexibility in tailoring that however we would like. At this time, there's really four unmarked police vehicles that are in very bad shape and actually were scheduled for replacement a number of years ago, and then due to some of the pursuit vehicles breaking down, they were kind of pushed off, and Sergeant Hobbs may want to address this, but at least two of those vehicles have very dramatically expired their useful life within the last couple of weeks, and so no longer available for service. And so what we're proposing at this time to trap the program is to see if the council will authorize me to execute documents for leasing of those four vehicles, and get those ordered on the way, and then through the budget process, make it a streamlined way to handle this would be, as long as there's money budgeted, or the budget approved by the council, that the City Manager could authorize replacement of additional vehicles through this program. So that's kind of a quick overview. We do have representatives from Enterprise here, if there's any specific questions about the program.
Thank you so much. And if I could open this up to the public for any questions that you may have about this? Seeing none, bring it back to council for further deliberation or action.
Do you want us to just?
Councilmember Overton, go ahead.
So there's a couple of things I'd like to know, is I see some prices here on pickup and SUVs are, I thought you gave me more SUVs, so they're four-wheel drives for our aircraft. We're not, would you get cars, per se? Maybe one or something?
Yeah, the police department has indicated that with the road system that we have, that cars are not too feasible. So what we'd be recommending at this time for those four vehicles is two four-wheel drive pickup trucks and two SUVs, and all four of those will be unmarked. But then moving forward would be all of the police interceptor SUVs for the pursuit vehicles in Lankin. There were several of them purchased a few years ago.
What would we need pickup trucks for, is my question? So why does the police department need a pickup truck?
The pickup trucks for moving objects around, hauling stuff, towing things, investigations, there's a lot of marijuana eradication, towing trailers, having a vehicle that can transport three, four, or five people in it comfortably. While the cars, no matter how small, you can't fit it full of people and take any gear with them to go do operations. So there's some benefits of having the larger vehicle that can fit four or five full-size officers inside them and their equipment.
And how often do we really think that's going to be used? Don't we use Public Works trucks for that already?
Currently.
Okay. So is that, so our thought is that instead of using Public Works trucks, we'll be using the police department would use their own vehicles? Okay. Which would really be our Public Works vehicles, and they're, or they're used. I just wanted to tell you, I wasn't, thank you.
Councilmember Kramer?
Yes, Mr. Flora. In this analysis, you've indicated ten-year overall savings of $308,000. Can you kind of go into just an executive summary of how you got there?
Sure. So there's a couple of things. A part of that savings is the reduced maintenance costs because you have newer fleet, reduce fuel costs because you have more fuel-efficient fleet. And then the other part is you're actually paying out less. So the way the program works is the lease payment is based on an assumption on what the equity in the vehicle will be at the end of the lease. So you say you have a $30,000 vehicle, assume that after five years, it's going to be worth $10,000. So we're actually paying the lease payment based on $20,000 instead of $30,000. And then obviously, it's an incentive to make sure that you take care of the vehicle at the end, because when that lease is up, we can, we could keep the vehicles, or we could turn them back to Enterprise and have them sell them on the market. And then that money is, can be cycled back into the program. If you sell for $10,000, $12,000, whatever, that money can be cycled back into the program. You actually have a little bit less of an outlay because of sort of that process. You're paying on a smaller amount over time, rather than if you were just to go out and finance it at the same interest rate, your payment would actually be higher. So those are kind of the big things that make up that savings. If I stated anything incorrectly, I'm sure our Enterprise folks.
And that's based on an ongoing replacement of all vehicles that need replacing over that 10-year period?
Yeah, based on the program that they put together, you can see, you know, they have outlined how many we replace each year, yeah. Of course, that number would be a little bit different if we didn't replace that full number and we held on to some of the longer years, savings would be a little bit less over that period, right? Than if you actually went and replaced all of them, because we're spending more on fuel and maintenance for the older pieces.
So you're saying there's an incentive to replace older? So you're saying there's an incentive to replace older, less efficient, polluting, more polluting vehicles by actually replacing more rather than less?
And you know, say we've had the two I mentioned and there was another, our school resource officer vehicle. All three of those vehicles were just driving on the city streets, down the road and like had a drive-train failure and are no longer operable. So it simplifies the condition of several of our fleet vehicles. And without an outlay of, you know, a half a million dollars a year for the next few years, I don't see us being able to really improve the condition of our fleet.
Hopefully they're going to last longer as our roads improve.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bennett, excuse me.
You touched on what I was going to bring up about the $500,000 per year. That includes not only replacement of vehicles, but upkeep, maintenance, replacing parts on a vehicle that should, should be gotten rid of because of safety hazards for the officers and the community. I take it? And gas costs.
Councilmember Overton.
So hopefully my last question is what is it going to take? Because I don't want to get into a contract. We say that, you know, they're going to certify or we can have our vehicles fixed down here because I don't want to be taken out of the area. What is that going to take? And before I would accept a contract, I would want to know if there's places certified before we do that to have our vehicles repaired. So.
Is that something you can address?
Sure. Hi, councilmembers, thank you for having us. So in terms of the maintenance program taking the shops here, it's really just a, it's a simple program that these shops would need to join to be on our approved maintenance list. It's not to say that you couldn't take them to another shop as well, but through our maintenance program, we do have these vendors. The reason that we use them is because they have, they have access to our service department and can easily get information to us about repairs so that your vehicles can get in and out of shops easily. But we've implemented this program in the city of Calstoga and the city of Santa Clara for both of them. Neither of them had a shop in their city at the time of implementation and we brought one, at least one, if not more than one on for use of their city vehicles. So it's typically not a huge burden for the shop or not a problem.
Do you know how long it normally would take for somebody to get certified for?
A lot. It depends on the responsiveness of the shop, but if they were responsive and ready to go, it's a matter of weeks. It might not be that long.
Thank you.
Mr. Flor, would you say that this is a general trend across the state as a more physically responsible way to maintaining a fleet?
Well, I think, you know, Kirsty may be better able to address that because she worked with a lot of governments, but it seems like it has been a trend. I think one reason that more cities and counties and jurisdictions are interested in the program is it was just within the last year and a half or so, the enterprise offered pursuit vehicles and you know, that's well over 50% of our fleet is pursuit vehicles. Historically, they didn't offer that. And so I think that's made the program more attractive, but you know, maybe one to address.
Yeah, I actually just received some numbers across the state of California. They've grown in terms of the government entities that we serve by about 50% over just the last 12 months. It's really been growing and especially with cities, as Alan mentioned, being able to work with those police pursuit vehicles is a huge benefit as a lot of the aftermarket equipment and things can be a cumbersome to manage. And like I mentioned, just Calstoga and Santa Clara, we brought them onboard here late last year as well. So we've definitely been seeing a lot more traction lately with just vehicle management and as Alan referenced, as well as if you're continuing to utilize these older vehicles, the situation isn't going to get better a lot quicker. So this is a way to improve the situation in a longer-term manner.
Thank you so much. You all entertain a motion.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to authorize a finance directive to executing master that we are leasing agreement, maintenance agreement, and take other actions as necessary with Enterprise Fleet Management Incorporated for the replacement of the city vehicles.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Overton and a second by Councilmember Bennett. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item nine is a public hearing to consider the adoption of the fee schedule for fiscal year 2018 through 19 and we'll be turning this over to City Manager.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, and get used to seeing our Finance Director for the next three items because he'll be taking them.
All righty then.
Thank you Vice Mayor Harris, members of the council. So historically, as part of the budget process, the city has a review and approved the new fee schedule and so we'd like to have your council do that again this evening. There are a few changes that are recommended. I would like to point out before we start that we've had a number of discussions about reviewing a number of fees and once the budget process is done, we're going to implement a new process to formalize our review of that and bring those back at a later time, but there are a number of them we're trying to take care of now. So we'll start with the animal control fees. Animal Control Ad Hoc Committee has met and discussed a couple of different fees that they wanted to recommend changing and one is related to the current license fees for dogs and the committee's recommended that there be a $5 discount given to both senior citizens and veterans on those fees. And the fees, the fee discount would be stackable, so if you are a senior citizen and a veteran, you'd be able to get a $10 discount for the license fees. And then the second part of that is there's a, currently if you adopt an animal that hasn't been spayed and neutered, you're required to pay the adoption fee and then a deposit for the spay and neuter. And the idea is to encourage you to go to a local veterinarian or the SBCA and have that animal spayed or neutered and then you come back to the city and the city returns that deposit to you. And the committee felt that the $40 deposit wasn't particularly effective and maybe more effective in getting folks to spay and neuter their animals by increasing that deposit amount to $100. That amount is still significantly less than actual cost of spaying and neutering. At all the places in the county, we did do a review of that, but the committee felt that the $100 amount would be that incentive to get folks to go spay and neuter their animal and then come back and give their $100 back. So the other one was the planning department fees. There has been some review done on all of the planning fees, but at this time, we're just recommending additional fees be put in place because of a number of requests for essentially printed copies of either the agenda or the full packet for the planning commission meetings. And so if you want to request the planning commission agenda cover sheet for each meeting for a year, the cost would be $50. And then if community members wanted to request the printed agenda packet, that would be $25 per meeting. So those are the changes. You can see in the attachments. I've highlighted the sections of the fee schedule that are impacted by these recommendations and the rest of the fee schedule would remain the same.
Thank you so much. And would there be anybody from the public that would like to comment on the side? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for further deliberation and action. Councilmember Bennett.
On your dog license fees, I noticed we give a veteran $5 discount and seniors discount for spay and neuter, but why not if they're animals are AKC or UKC or working dogs or something like that?
You know, to be honest, I don't know that that was specifically discussed with the committee, but you know, I don't know if there's any. I think the council would have discretion on expanding that if they so desired.
Councilmember Kramer.
Again, on the animal, cat, dog adoption fees, was the actual adoption fee changed or is that the same as what it's been?
It's the same.
Okay. And that's, they didn't think that that extra $60 would discourage even going through the adoption? No?
There was some discussion about that because you know, it is costly to, to get spay and neuter done and so.
But I think, you know, we're trying to encourage the adoption of these animals out of our, I assume these are out of our shelter?
Yes.
I don't know. Seems like that's a bit of a hard hit. Not so much on the spay and neuter, I get that on the adoption end. But there, it's my observation there.
Councilmember Overton.
So I want to know is, is, I'm going to kind of piggyback right here on this one. Is that a recovery cost for our animal control or is that just a fee that just charging the deposit?
Yeah, it's, it's not a recovery cost. There's really no cost other than processing the payment and the refund, but you know, the ultimate goal is to make sure all those pets are spayed and neutered and so it's common practice in the, in the industry to provide some kind of deposit so you know, you go out and get that done. I mean, the benefit that some county shelters and larger shelters have is that they have a clinic on site so they can actually spay and neuter the animals before they're adopted out and then you don't have to worry about it, right? But we don't have that situation because we don't have those facilities.
Yeah, a big concern that they had and again, the deposit is completely refundable. They just had to prove that the animals have been spayed or neutered. But because it was only, I believe, $40 to begin with, the feeling in the community was people paying the 40 bucks, it's a lot cheaper just to lose your deposit than it is to give them spayed or neutered. So this was a lot closer to the cost of getting spayed or neutered and that was the logic.
Plus if they don't come back for the deposit, they know where they're, where they live at, I'm assuming because they have addresses and stuff and then they're going to get a fine on top of, on top of all of that.
Right.
Okay. And then my second thing is, is I'm assuming on that $5 for veterans and seniors, it goes for all the licenses, the double licensing because it's at the very bottom. Am I correct? So AK, yeah, the specialized animals would still get the $5 discount?
Well, I think, I think that the way it's presented here with the asterisk, it certainly looks like it's not the specialized animals, so if the council wants to include those in the discount as well, I think, you know, we should put a asterisk on that line as well so that it's clear.
Well, I mean, I think that I would just assume it just.
Across the board.
Pass the board. Just makes it easier.
Yeah, I would.
Makes it easier and plus, you know, if they are seniors and our veterans that have served as well. So I think that just across the board on that is my.
Councilmember Kramer.
I'm still stuck on the adoption fee. I just, you know, we have a lot of animals coming into our shelter and we're, it almost seemed like a disincentive to, on the adoption fee, when you say there's really no cost to doing that, I understand the neutering fee and the deposit.
Well, no, I don't think that there's no cost on the adoption because with adoptions, you're taking in animals so you're, you've got the cost of your animal control officers, you've got the cost of the camels, you've got the cost of the B, you've got the cost of the veterinary. We're not coming close to recovering costs with the $100 or $115, just a small part.
And I understand that too, but the longer they stay in the shelter, the more it's costing. We want to have an incentive for people to come in and adopt animals. I'd like to see us look at that. I don't know that we'd have an action on it tonight, but that one fee is going to, I don't know.
The charity.
Yeah, disincentive rather than an incentive to move animals out of our shelter.
I do recall extensive deliberation in the ad hoc committee regarding those fees and there was a lot of reasons given on both sides to go up or down on the fees and they collectively came to that decision based off of, by the entire ad hoc committee, so.
Yeah, if I could just add one thing, I mean, the city is not allowed to, you know, charge a fee that's higher than the actual cost that goes into providing that service. So that's one thing that I really want us to look at on these as well as some other fees is making sure that we have that clear calculation of what it costs the city to provide that animal for adoption and then provide that to the council and then the council can either say, yeah, we want to have full cost recovery or we think that's too high and as a community service, we want to subsidize that fee amount with some additional funding and lower that cost, so.
Fair enough. So if I hear this correctly, if we go forward with a motion on this, we can make a modification to include all the licensing discounts across the board? Just make a modification to the, okay, resolution.
And to be transparent, although I'm a veteran and a senior, I registered my dog yesterday. So we're going to get a break.
Okay, go ahead and counsel, councilman.
I'd also like to see on our fee schedule for our rental of the community center, it's always done in like four-hour increments and the reality is, is most people who want to rent it for an event are renting it for the full day with a lot of other, you know, cleanup time and this and this and this and sometimes it can add up to be a lot. I think we deter ourselves by doing that and not having just like a flat rate for the day and just not something that's so outrageous. I mean, most people can go and, you know, rent a building for the day for like $400, you know, and here if they rented it for eight hours, it would be $600 plus, you know, they need that cleanup and we charge for cleanup and take down and all that stuff. It could end up to be 10, 12 hours, which, you know, just really kind of, I think, is not the benefit of the use of that building. So I'd like to maybe do a little investigation, I'm not saying tonight, but I'd like to have it looked at to see if we can come up with a cost that's a reasonable cost for a full day event to, I know nonprofits get breaks, but I mean, it is a community building and I think the reason why we don't have it ran it out even more is because we don't really have a decent rate for a whole day event. And so I'd like to just look at that and maybe have a discussion on that in the future.
Question, Mr. Kramer.
What, what happens when it goes over four hours? You add another $300 or $170?
$70 per hour. Per hour.
Okay.
I'd just like to maybe look at that and maybe bring it back and run up on the fee schedule because it is what it is, but I'd like to maybe come up with something a little better than that for our community. I'd like to see it run it out more. I don't think sitting there as much as what it does is benefiting us any and I think it has a lot to do with this. I know it was still way less than what it was, but I'm just looking at, is there something else that we can do? Second off, you cannot rent the entire building, so I really think that that needs to be taken out and we need to break it down. There is, there's a municipal, there's an auxiliary, there's one crossing, there's the kitchen. You cannot rent the entire building. So when somebody is paying this amount of money in the first place, they feel they have the use and sometimes they come to me to use our offices because they have rented the entire building. So it's misleading and I, I think I asked for that to be taken out before, but I might really feel that should be taken out totally because it's impossible to rent the entire building. Now, we have the egg station there and our offices and so there's only those three spaces that they can rent. So I'd like to have that changed. Those are my questions on that. I think that's it for me. Thank you.
So if I entertain a motion on this particular resolution?
I'll wait for it, but I'd like to make the motion to adopt resolution number 2018-22. I read it by title only. I read it by title only. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Clearlake adopting the fee schedule for the fiscal year 2018-2019.
Is this as modified, or did any of these come in?
We didn't modify anything.
So we, go ahead, make a caveat to your modification?
Outside of the five dollars, are we gonna bring it back? I mean...
Did you modify to include to all, to A, K, C, and all the specialized animals?
Yeah, maybe. I did, with the modifications of the five dollars to include on all fees for licensing.
Thank you for that clarification. And if it's the will of the council, the entire building section could be just removed. We could just include that as part of the...
And remove the entire building section of the community center renovation rates.
Fair enough. I have a motion of a second.
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Overton and a second by councilmember Kramer. Can I get a roll call vote on this?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Kramer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Now, a motion to close the public hearing on this item. Okay?
The, the vote already took place, so I think it was understood that the public...
Okay, just making sure. Okay, so item number ten, public hearing considering the adoption of the City of Clearlake's budget fiscal year 2018 through 19. City manager, and deflected it. Mr. Flores?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Harris. So, I have a few slides to go over. I know that Vice Mayor Harris really likes my presentation, so I wanted to put something together here. Just a quick overview. Wanted to just briefly go over the council's strategic plan and the city goals. A few key accomplishments from seventeen eighteen. A snapshot of eighteen nineteen's budget. And go over in detail some of the recommendations from the staff. And then, of course, the opportunity for council review and direction. So, just want to verbalize the city's goals again. Make Clearlake a visibly cleaner city. Make Clearlake a statistically safer city. Improve the quality of life in Clearlake with improved public facilities. Improve the image of Clearlake. Ensure fiscal, fiscal sustainability of the city. Update policies and procedures to current government standards. And city policies will support economic development. So, I wasn't here, but City Manager Folsom still would like for me to go over some key accomplishments that the staff and the council made over the last year, so... Of course, at the top really being roads and infrastructure. There's a design and planning on many projects the council is aware of that will go into construction this year. Very exciting. Hiring of additional staff through Measure B for construction and maintenance of our road network. Purchase of construction and maintenance equipment. And so, both Measure B and SB one funding, should it survive the November election, will provide a healthy and more stable source of funds for many road projects in the future. And then additionally, the Series A bond funds have and will continue to support a number of road and parks and recreation projects over the next several years throughout the city. Just a few code enforcement numbers of this fiscal year through the end of May. Five hundred and seventy-seven property cases were opened. Twenty-eight overgrown vegetation cases were opened. There were a hundred and seventeen cannabis cultivation, illegal cannabis cultivation cases opened. Thirty thousand five hundred pounds of trash and debris were cleaned up. Nine thousand two hundred pounds of metal and e-waste were cleaned up and removed. And six hundred and five vehicles were abandoned. So, a lot of, a lot of effort by our code enforcement staff. Of course, some big wins for job creation and business attraction. You're aware that Big Five and Tractor Supply, those businesses were attracting, will be opening very soon. Will be around twenty-five jobs created between the two. And then, of course, in most recent news, Mario's Silks Building was removed, enhancing the downtown corridor and providing some of the key development space within the downtown area. And then, a big investment on energy upgrades, both here in the community center and some of the park facilities. So I believe both of the solar energy projects were completed, which is great news. And then, they're finishing up some of the HVAC upgrades here in this building. Should be done in the next couple of weeks. So I wanted to go over just a couple of recent economic indicators. Most of these are state or national indicators, but, you know, we saw this week that inflation is up significantly. May's numbers over last year, the increase is the highest over the last six years. So, a little bit concerning in that area, but these are primarily due to increases in fuel costs. We were seeing those continue to rise and, and rent increases. Wages at this point have remained relatively flat nationwide. And so that the increase in inflation, flat wages is, is gonna put more pressure on consumers. We had an interest rate increase of a quarter percent this week, and those are expected to continue rising to more increases, I believe, this year. We're aware of some of the international trade issues, so tariffs and things that are going on. Fortunately, California exports are continuing to increase, which is good news. And California's continuing to add jobs. Most of these jobs are in the construction and healthcare sector. So I'm sure many of those construction jobs are sort of in the, in the North Bay because of the fires. And then, at our budget workshop, I wanted to show you a little bit of information on residential property values and wasn't able to make that work. So I wanted to try to, try to do that this time. So, this is just a live website from Zillow showing the City of Clearlake's market. And this is, there's somewhat limited information for the city. So this is the Zillow Home Value Index. And you can see that we are seeing, you know, some steady growth, actually a sharp increase over the last few months. Still not quite recovered from pre-recession levels. But I think, I think it's important to compare this to some other areas within the county and be able to see where we go. That's, that's Lakeport's number we're looking at. Currently, three hundred and four thousand for a three-bedroom home compared to Clearlake's a hundred and seventy thousand. If we look at some other communities within the county... You can see that all of them... Are, show similar trends, all of them level of City of Clearlake. So, I just think it exemplifies, it's not something that all of you don't know, but the importance of the job creation, economic development efforts, the infrastructure investment that this council provided leadership on. Because there's a significant difference between the residential property values here in the city. And, you know, that impacts a lot of things in our economy and the revenue that the city has to, has to work with. So, I just wanted to, to share that information and keep that in mind and try and identify new economic development options. Okay, so, just a quick look. Our general fund revenue mix, can see largely property sales and TOT tax, almost seventy percent. Licenses and other fees, which include our franchise fees, which were growing. We'll talk a little bit about that more. But you can kind of see the breakdown of the, the big revenue for the general fund. This just shows those main categories over time. You can see that we're projecting about a half a million dollar increase over the current fiscal year in the, in the general fund. And so you can see from the blue part, that's our property sales tax, that is increasing slightly, is still relatively flat. The big increases that we're seeing is the purple one at the top, which is some, some transfers from other funds for expenditures in the general fund. And then also the green area, which is our licenses and fees. And the, the big driver there is the increase in solid waste franchise fee. Both that fifty percent increase and the mandatory pickup is, is driving a significant increase in there. So this chart just shows the breakdown in kind of some of those main categories. If you just look at property tax, it's just over thirty percent. Our TOT being almost five percent. Sales tax about twenty-eight. And then altogether, our franchise fees about nine. And, and then all the others there. And then spending from bounds from prior years that's available. That one-time money this year is, is about five percent. Which is six point two one. So we talked quite a bit about sales stock, sales tax last time. I just, I wanted to make a new chart to kind of show you. We've talked a lot about Measure V revenue really increasing a lot and significantly more than its budget. And so, the red line that you see there is the Bradley Burns. That's the discretionary one percent that, that the city has. And then Measure P in the blue line. And so, you can see that those have shown increases, but remain relatively steady. But Measure V is looking to significantly outperform both of those. And if you want more detail on this, you know, because Measure V and essentially the Bradley Burns are both one percent taxes, but you can see Measure V is much more than that. And the things that are taxed, there is a difference. The largest driver of that really being auto sales. So, we don't have any auto dealerships here within the city. But if I go buy a new vehicle in Santa Rosa, the sales tax is captured with the, the extra taxes that have been adopted. Measure V and Measure B will get a portion of the sales tax from that transaction. But the Bradley Burns does not benefit from that. So that's one of the big reasons why there's been... If we look at across all funds, we organized the budget a little bit differently this year. And so all of the budget units or departments that are overseen, for example, by the city manager, which includes our Series A and Series B bond funds and the redevelopment funds, makes up about twenty-one percent of total appropriations. Public safety being about twenty-five percent of that, twenty-two point five million. And then with all the public works projects that are in progress, nearly fifty percent of appropriations. You just look at the general fund, obviously it's a significantly different picture. Public safety making up about sixty-three point two percent. And so that's all the budgets that are overseen by the police department, including animal control and animal coverage. So this is just a breakdown showing, you know, what that money's spent on. Thirty percent. If you look at all funds, almost thirty percent salaries. Big pieces of that are the Capital Outlay, all the Capital Road projects and things. And then the transfers there picked up, because all the transfers between funds for those projects. Just looking at the general fund, just under seventy percent with the final recommendations on salaries. And you can see the breakdown right there. So, at the May budget workshop, the council spent some significant time talking about the challenges with hiring maintenance workers. And particularly, so at that time, we were recommending that some additional part-time maintenance workers be hired to assist in the parks. And the council was concerned that, you know, we have so much difficulty hiring those maintenance workers. We ought to try to hire more. And then addressing the full-time maintenance worker recruitment retention problems that we've had. And there was some interest in possibly increasing the salary level in some of those positions. So, with this budget, we're not addressing salary level because that's a negotiation issue that, you know, requires a separate process to deal with. But we've adjusted the recommendations. And so in seventeen eighteen, there were six part-time, eleven full-time maintenance worker positions. That's senior maintenance worker, maintenance three, and maintenance two, with four of those Measure V positions being added at mid-year. And so what we're recommending is that we take three of those part-time positions, eliminate those, and push that funding into adding another full-time maintenance worker position. And if you look at the position allocations, there would be more of those maintenance workers times it would address our partners than it creates. And then, we did want to point out too, that historically, we mostly offered part-time maintenance worker positions at twelve dollars an hour. And the maintenance worker two position starts at thirteen oh five. So, the city manager would recommend, you know, assuming they meet those qualifications, to make this worker two, start those folks at that level, which, you know, is just over a dollar an hour would make, make help. And then, of course, the, based on the experience of the individual applying, they could repay more based on their qualifications. Not sure if public works director Aaron has his hand up?
No.
So I don't know if the council has any questions on this, but we wanted to specifically go over because it was a significant point of discussion.
Councilmember Overton?
Okay, so, just reviewing some wages with, you know, what I have to do already. I'm surprised we get anybody to apply for a part-time job. Because the reality is, is almost all of them can go to work at McDonald's now. So I really think we're gonna have to start looking at these wages more seriously and seeing what we can do here. Because I, I understand we had a position open and we didn't really get any outside applications. No, there was one in public works, that was, that just closed.
Which position are you referring to?
We... That's just for public works that I know. Like I said, it closed, and he didn't get anybody to apply except for somebody that was already working for the city, so...
There was one.
So, and I think a lot of it has to do with our wages. As, as we really do need to see what we can do. If we can't fill the positions anyway, they're really not, you know, if nobody's gonna apply for them, like I said before, if nobody's gonna apply for them, it's not really doing any good, keep putting them out. We need to figure out what we can do. I think we need to, I know it's really hard to do it right now, but I think we do need to take some serious looking at these wages these next six months and maybe at mid-year, see if we can figure out what we can do in these departments. Because it's gonna just get harder for us to hire them because of the wages. And so I think we do need to really look down here and see where these, where we can get some funding to help that. And maybe it's another grant or something, I don't know. But I hate grants because they're only, you know, one-time shot money. But I, I know this is the problem because of the response I've gotten when I ask people, I'll go down and apply, when I told them the wages, it was like, I can go to work at McDonald's, so why would I go out and work outside in the heat at a hundred and ten degrees? You know, so I do think that that's just something that we need to take very seriously on our, in our public works department. I think that's our problem. So, I don't think that there are not qualified people out there. I just don't think they're gonna go to work for twelve dollars now. I mean, not, especially with rent going up this high, as it's not, they can't even pay their bills. So, so that's my opinion on that, like, just going out there.
Like to open this up to the public for any comments? Go ahead and step up to the podium.
I hate walking. I agree with you. I agree with you. Well, I work outside in the heat and it doesn't make any... Well, I work outside in the heat and it doesn't make any sense. That would be like 15 and 18 would be a start because paying bills, it's just not going to, it's not going to cut it. So I agree.
Thank you so much. Anybody else who would like to comment? Please come up.
I also agree with you, Joyce. I pay more than this. Granted, I don't provide healthcare and vacation, but...
That's not what, that's part of my...
I'm going past where you end. So the other thing associated with the budget, can I just make a comment while I'm up here? I got a lot of feedback about the condition of the parks. And I just noticed that as I drive around the lake, everything looks really lush, whether you're doing parks along Highway 20 or down in the Middletown, we've got really green grass and beautiful. And here, when we weren't even able to mow the lawns for the flag thing, I can't tell you how much negative feedback we're getting. Thank you.
Hello, I agree regarding the salary increase. It would be a great idea. Seems like whenever there's a few years, you have a penalty or fine. It's at the top of the scale. And now we're talking about wages, it seems to be lower at the scale. So it'd be nice if you take a look at that and, and make a decision based on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public like to comment? If not, I'll bring it back to council for the deliberation and action.
Do you have some more slides for you?
Oh, sorry. I'm so sorry.
It's okay. I just thought we might want to pause.
That's fine. Thank you so much. I did not realize that.
I couldn't end this soon.
Continue.
No, but getting into...
This is what it likes to slide.
Getting into the recommendations. So it's outlined in your materials, but of course, we need to discuss and have your council provide direction. And then assuming there are some changes, we've come back with the final document and the council would adopt the budget on, on June 28th. Either tonight or on June 28th, you can adopt the GAN appropriations limit. That's an item that I think we'll address specifically after, after we're done with the budget. But there are a few staff recommendations, things that happened or we've become aware of since the budget was released. So just a few things we wanted to go over there. The city manager has authorized some additional overtime for maintenance workers to address the backlog of maintenance on the streets. And so that's continuing at this time, but we didn't include very much overtime in next year's budget in either gas tax or Measure V. And so public works director is recommending that we add 25,000 overtime to each of those funds. That would not resolve in our general budget impact. We received notice that there's a grant from state parks for Austin Park for interpretive trail display. The city manager Folsom wants to talk about that. So I believe a $340,000 project, 50% would be funded by the city and 170,000 would be funded by state parks. So we'd like to add that, add that to the budget.
Yeah, so that, that's something that we applied for through the, the state parks. It's an Austin Park waterfront interpretive trail. So it'll be a hardscape trail along the waterfront for people to, with, what do they call it? Kiosks to show the type of wildlife, to talk about the history of the lake and those types of things.
Interpretive panels.
Interpretive panels.
Is that the one way that had been discussed ago, that we've been talking about for, let's see, 14 years that I know of?
Yeah.
That would be, that would be so awesome to actually do that then.
So is the cost for that 340,000 or that's just amount of the grant?
The grant is half of that. So that's the estimated cost is 340,000.
It is, there is an estimate out there of an interpretive trail at 340,000.
Right, yeah, we have a design put together for it with, as part of the application to the grant.
Was part of the original works master plan.
Councilmember Bennett?
I have a question for the finance director. On this SB 1, it's going to be on the ballot in November. Are we expending any money, any SB 1 funds that we may have to repay or is there a chance that's going to be knocked down? You know, state senator lost his seat over that already.
Yeah, so maybe public works director Aaron wants to address this, but I would just say that we are receiving increased revenues already, but when SB 1 was put into place, there was a number of different sources of funding. And so several of those haven't phased in yet or phased in now. So over the next few years, that revenue would be increasing. I, I'm not aware that we would have to pay anything back, but maybe you'd like to address
No, so the way it's set up right now, all the money's been allocated is what was, was what's been, they figured out how much they were going to, we were going to receive up till this thing was challenged. So if it gets repealed, that will end right there. And all the money that's been allocated was money that they've already earned. So if the city, clearly we already got $200,000, which was, we got, because we're a self-help city, so we got 200,000, which is going to go out here in part of our perimeter sidewalk, which is our civic center enhancement project. We weren't successful in our competitive project. There's $500 million was, that's allocated, but a lot of it went down to, down south to the bigger projects. But if, if it gets repealed, then it'll go away. But until then, the money will be allocated bank and then we'll, we'll keep applying to the projects.
Thank you.
And then one other project was somehow left off of our capital projects list, and that was the Highlands Harbor Drive Heartland Rehabilitation Project. The intention was to fund the Measure V funds. And so our recommendation would be to go ahead and add that in now. And looking at a way to, to freak out some Measure V funds for that project, we had 675,000. I'm just realizing that the numbers aren't right on that. But 675,000 was budgeted for equipment. And because we were able to purchase so much equipment this year, we think that that may be more than is necessary. So we would actually recommend reducing that 675,000 to 375,000 and using that 300,000 for the Highlands Harbor. And then wanted to go over, our, our mayor isn't here, but he did have a chance to review the budget and sent some comments to city manager Folsom and myself. Did provide the response to each of the council members that we sent and tried to address some of those, but wanted to kind of just quickly go over those. I don't know if you had a chance to look at all of this. So was, he had some concerns about animal control revenue and vet services costs. And so wanted to point out that we feel like the, the revenue that he mentioned for the administrative penalties has been growing. And currently this year, we're looking at being almost $100,000. And so we do feel like that's a realistic revenue estimate for next year. And we're looking at a, at a small reduction in vet services costs that the city was able to enter to an agreement with county animal control for some services that are lower cost than what we've been paying previously. So we do think that, that that's a solid estimate at this point. We've talked with the council about this before. We still have not received final verification on receipt of CPG grant for code enforcement, although the city managers received a number of positive indications that we'll be getting word on that anytime. So we did go ahead and include that in the budget. And we're holding off hiring additional code enforcement officer until we get word of But, you know, we would just say that we need to keep that open and then we would return to council immediately with the plan if, if for some reason we did find out that we weren't going to receive those funds. And I think we do have a number of options while trying to address that and making sure that we survive a robust code enforcement program. And then we also did not budget any abandoned vehicles for re-revenue this year. I think the council is aware on, on the problems with administration of that program. And those fees are currently not being collected. And it sounds like it's going to take a significant amount of time for the DMV to begin collecting that. So it is possible that we'll get a few thousand dollars this year, but we don't expect it to be very much. So $20,000 is budgeted for payment of abandoned vehicles. It's much less than the last few years, but we did think it was important enough to the council that we needed to budget some general fund to be able to address some of those. And again, we're doing some research and think that there may be some other options if you don't, to increase that funding throughout the year. But that's what we are recommending this time. And then just finishing up, reserves. So our recommendation is increasing the general fund reserve from 427,132 up to 625,000. Maintaining the insurance reserve that we are required to have of 150,000. And then also establishing a contingency fund of 150,000. And that is another way that if there's some shortfalls or something unexpected throughout the year, that the council can choose to use some of that money and not have to, not have to give to reserve. And then just because we feel like it's so important, we spent a lot of time at the budget workshop, talked about pension costs and, you know, we shared some of the tools that we purchased that are in the process of implementing to analyze and provide options for the city. And why we feel like the city's in a pretty good place overall with our unfundability. We want to make sure and mention that it is really important and we do want to come back over the next several months and do work in-depth study with the council on options to make, to make sure that unfundability hasn't got the control right this month. So that's, that's all about the recommendations we have. So just a follow-up to any questions.
All right, thank you so much. Any further questions, council?
Thank you. That was very, very nice and very, explained very well. And I do like your power, he's right. Vice Mayor Wright, thanks for us.
Very detailed presentation, Mr. Flora. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Open back up to the public for any comment.
Is there any way to enter into partnership with our local vets for reduced fees for the animals in this, that you guys keep here? Because they're more adoptable and you have to keep the shots up to date. So wouldn't they, isn't there a way to talk to them about reduced fees for your animals kept here as part of the city partnership plan? I'm just wondering. I'm thinking about that.
Well, I know there's, there's actually been some extensive effort in coming to resolution on those things with local, local vets, which has been a difficulty. So there's been tons of discussion with the local vets on that. So definitely there's effort being made in that department.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
No problem. Anybody else from the public like to make any comments? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for, for the deliberation and motion maybe?
First we need a motion or you can just close the public hearing.
We'll just go ahead and close the public hearing. Bring it back to council. Councilmember Kramer?
Back to the minimum wage for part-time workers, is that correct? Is that what you're looking at?
It was a lot more than what we...
Just 13.
Or me?
1305.
Minimum wage?
Yeah.
Is it going to be, what's, is there a...
It's 11.
11?
15.
It's going up to $1 a year now.
Yeah, so, but anyway, be that as it may, if you're competing with jobs, vineyard workers, cannabis workers that are making 17 and 18, how are we competing on that? Just a general question. Are, are we able to fill those positions?
We recently ran a recruitment at the new level of wages for part-time timber and maintenance worker. We did have an increase in applications. We had more applicants show up for the interviews than we had in the past. And we did have more applicants moving forward with the background processing. So we are in that process right now. And as you gave direction at the budget workshop, we did advertise at the new level and that did bring in some new applicants and perhaps made some changes. And we did have people show up. So it made, it may have made a difference.
You still have to fill positions, you're still in the process?
We're in the backgrounding process, yeah.
Anybody else?
So I will say that I was, from my best estimate and looking at comparative numbers in the area, I would say we're definitely on the lower end, of course, as well. I would say we're sitting around 20% disparity is where we should be for that particular job title, that series of job titles. So that's, I totally agree. I think there's a pretty good consensus on council that those, those, that particular section of our city needs to have some attention brought to it on the, looking at the wages, current wages and what we can be doing there, so.
Anybody that I'd like to entertain a motion?
I would, to my favor, I would move that we adopt a resolution in the city council, resolution number 2018-23 of the city cleric adopting the city cleric fiscal year 2018-2019 budget as amended.
I'll second that. So we have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call down? Vote?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kramer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
And now I'll move on to a public hearing to consider the adoption of the appropriation limit, GAN limit for fiscal year 2018 through 19 and the designating of the formula to be used for calculation of same. And deflected once again to Mr. Flora.
Yes, Vice Mayor Harris. So you can see in your materials, the city is required to adopt an appropriations limit each year. This is based on, there's an option for a few different calculations, but with information provided by the Department of Finance, based on per capita income index and population increase. So Schedule A of the resolution shows the calculation. We've also included the appropriate sections of the letter that we received from the Department of Finance to make that calculation. You can see that we are over $1 million below the appropriation limit of this budget. And just recommend that your council have this resolution.
Thank you. Would you like to open, sign them up to the public for any comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for further deliberation and action.
It's required someone to sign with this.
All right. So no comments here at council, entertain a motion.
Now, move that we adopt resolution number 2018-24, the city council with the city of Cleric adopting the appropriation limit. the city council of the City of Clear Lake, adopting appropriations limiting for the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, and designating the formula to be used for a calculation of the same.
So, a motion by Mr. Kramer and we all have a second by Mrs. Overton and if I can get a roll call vote.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Kramer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Moving on, consideration of approval of Resolution Number Two Zero One Eight Dash Two One, designation of sub recipients agent, resolution for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and Pre-Disaster Mitigation Program to city manager?
Yeah, I don't want you to forget about me, so I'll take this one.
No, you're there, you're there.
The City of Clear Lake recently applied for, through CalOES, for a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant. We have been approved for that grant. That grant basically is going to lay out our mitigation strategy, so how we're going to deal with earthquakes, how we're going to deal with fires, how we're going to deal with, you know, whatever type of natural hazards. By having that plan in place, we'll be eligible for additional FEMA funding. So, it's a really important plan to have in place. However, one of the things that we need to do is designate authorized agents who have the authority to execute all assurances and agreements required by the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services. Staff is recommending that the city manager, the finance director, and the public works director be the three designated agents for the three-year period. Just to give you a little bit of more information about that grant, there is a twenty-five percent match requirement, but that match can be in-kind through donations of time and resources. The grant is for, I believe it's a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred, with up to a thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollar match from the city for a total grant, a total project value of a hundred and fifty thousand. And that concludes my report on that.
Thank you. I'll open this up to the public for any comments. If you'd like to make any comments, thank you to come up to the podium.
I was excited to see this on the agenda. In fact, I just finished a course with FEMA on fire mitigation and read all the publications. So, there's a lot of things we can do and I'm certainly working on doing that in the House. I'm rehabilitating to make sure I get those fire mitigation pieces in. And as I go through the process, I'll be interested to see how much I hear from the city and maybe I can support looking at some of this with you. So, I'm certainly an in-kind volunteer that would be available.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public like to make a comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for deliberation, action.
Public comment, not a public hearing.
Sorry. Public comment. Thank you for that clarification.
Sorry.
All right. And councilmember Overton?
Yeah, I'm really glad to see something like this. I've been really wanting more of an emergency plans and things and how we're going to handle all of this stuff for many years. And so, I think it's great that we got a grant that we can really get into this and organize this, so. And I just think Cheryl, she's our twenty-five percent and vice her to that. So, of course, I think there'll be a lot of people that'll be more than happy to help with this on the in-kind part, so I don't think we'll have to worry about that. So, I think that would be.
No other comments here at council, if I can see some action.
I would move for the approval of Resolution Number Two Zero One Eight Dash Twenty-one for the designation of sub recipients agent, resolution for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and Pre-Disaster Mitigation Program and add the recommendations that were set forth for the people that would be, staff that would be on board with that.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Bennett and a second by Mr. Kramer. If I can have a roll call vote outside.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Kramer?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Next item up is the consideration of a designation of voting delegates and alternates for the League of Cities, California Cities Annual Conference in September.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'm going to toss this one over to Melissa Swanson, our city clerk.
Honorable mayor and council members, the League of California Cities Annual Conference is scheduled this year for September twelfth through September fourteenth in Long Beach. At this meeting, the league membership considers and takes action on resolutions that establish league policy. In order to vote at the annual business meeting, the city council must designate a voting delegate. In the event that the designated voting delegate is unable to serve in that capacity, the council may appoint up to two alternates. If any council member is planning to attend, it's purely for the council to appoint him or her as the delegate and/or an alternate. At this time, we have not received the information on what resolutions are coming up or any issues coming up before the league for the delegates to vote on yet. And at this time, councilmember Overton, city manager Folsom, and vice mayor Harris have registered to attend. So, the proper motion would be to designate one council member or the city manager as a voting delegate and one as an alternate, or up to two, excuse me, as an alternate.
Thank you. All right, open this up.
Go ahead, Mr. Kramer. Councilmember Overton has been very heavily involved in League of California Cities for a while. I would like to see her as a voting delegate if she's.
Should I open this up to the public? All right, so I'll open this up to the public for comment. If anybody has a comment they'd like to make on this item, please come up to the podium. All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for deliberation.
Phil's the only other council member?
At this time, councilmember Bennett has indicated he will not be going, but I have not heard from councilmember Kramer or Mayor Sabatier as to their decision.
At this point, I couldn't tell you whether I'd be able to go in September or not.
I would suggest that Vice Mayor Harris be the alternate since you are going already.
So, I'm in agreement with that, so is this my motion? So, I'll make a motion to appoint council.
You can't make the motion.
I'm sorry. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. You already started that before.
You can't make the motion.
That's right. Realize my position.
Ready to make, yeah, I would like to move that we designate councilwoman Overton as a voting delegate and Vice Mayor Harris as an alternate.
I can second that, though.
Second.
Oh, go for it, it's fine.
That's a good position you're in, you should just stay neutral.
Okay, that's perfect. We got a motion and a second by councilmember Bennett and all on paper.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Forgive me, it's my first time in this position, so a little hot seat, a little hot seat in here. So, if I can get the city manager report?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Just a couple of things. As was mentioned earlier during the budget accomplishments, one of the things that did get done actually just this week was the demolition of Silk's Mario's Lodge. That's something that's been a long time coming. It's addition by subtraction. I'm just real thrilled that that happened and I think everybody is. As was mentioned also earlier, Tractor Supply is coming. We do have a grand opening date. I don't have a time for you yet, but Saturday, July twenty-first is the date that we're looking at for the grand opening. So, as soon as I get a specific time for that, I'll let you know. I just want to thank a few people also. There was a joint effort, I don't think we really publicized this a lot, but there was a joint effort just last Friday to clean up the area behind Tractor Supply in anticipation of this grand opening. Public work was out there, police department was out there, code enforcement was out there, cleaning up, once again, just as we did last year to kind of make that area a nicer area to try and get Tractor Supply and Vifify to come here. We did a cleanup in anticipation of this grand opening, so when people go out there, they're going to, you know, not see a bunch of garbage, they're going to see something really nice. Walmart was out there helping out and I want to, once again, C.C. for C., as they always do, was out there helping to pick up the trash. They're just a phenomenal organization, just want to throw that out there for appreciation, everybody involved with that. I think we had thirty cubic yards of garbage that was picked up this last time, if I remember correctly. Again, more tires, more shopping carts, just a bunch of junk. This week, we had our Measure B Citizen Oversight Committee meeting that seemed to go pretty well. There were no action that was taken out of that. We're planning to have another meeting in September when we have the final numbers for the current fiscal year, but otherwise, I think that overall, they were very pleased with the progress that's being made and the city is on track for spending monies properly in their eyes. We had a meeting with Caltrans and the Area Planning Commission folks this week. We're talking about interchanges that will be coming in, you know, far down the road, but we're trying to plan in advance. There's a section of the Highway Fifty-three that goes through Clear Lake that at some point in the future, they have, it's currently designated as an expressway, but it will be designated as a freeway. And when it becomes a freeway, that requires interchanges instead of intersections. Interchanges have on-ramps and off-ramps and overpasses and all that kind of stuff and they're extremely expensive. So, we want to plan it right and do it in advance of our shopping center going in. So, that's some of the discussions we're having right now. And I mentioned the two grants that we've got earlier, just a couple of dates to keep in mind. June nineteenth, we've got supervisor Jeff Smith here, but June nineteenth, at the Board of Supervisors, the Tourism Improvement District Resolution of Formations going before the Board. So, that's something that we're going to be discussing here as well, but that's, and I've talked about this a little bit, the Tourism Improvement District is the hotelier, the hospitality industry that's going to be self-assessing themselves for the purposes of doing enhanced promotions to bring in more tourism. So, I think it's something that's real important for this community. June twentieth, there, we have, we will be having a marketing committee meeting, June twentieth as well in the evening. I'll be giving a presentation to the Lake County Chamber at their monthly dinner, so if anyone's interested, sign up for that. June twenty-third, I think that's next Saturday, we'll be having our K9 fundraiser dinner, so if you, I don't know if that's sold out yet, Sergeant Hobbs or not.
It is, but there's normally a little bit of availability if people show up and don't have tickets.
Okay, so, there's still a little bit of availability, so please show up for that or buy your tickets for next year. The Lake County Economic Development Corporation has been sponsoring an economic development strategic plan for Lake County. There is a community meeting on Wednesday, June twenty-seventh, so really want to encourage people to come out for that, especially councilmembers to come out for that, give your input on the strategic plan for the county. We have our regular city council meeting on June twenty-eighth and then just a reminder about the Independent State Parade fireworks on Saturday, June thirtieth, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Kramer?
Yes, being pretty sure today. Went to Area Planning Council, Lake Transit Authority, combined more meeting on, what was that, Tuesday? Basically, the meeting, the purpose of the meeting was just to approve the annual budgets. It's, it's the week to start approving budgets. We had to hurry through it so Supervisor Smith could get to his next meeting and work on their budget. So, one of the, some of the things that were in that were, of course, the way you discussed a little later in the morning with regard to the interchanges. There are funds to move forward with that as we, as we go forward, I was happy to see. An update on our emergency shelter project. The generator, preparation for the generator is going forward. The transfer switch is what's happening now. I ordered, the generator was ordered, probably going to be August by the time it gets here. And also with the grant that we received lately from Tipping Point, now moving forward with ordering and pre-identification of the portable restroom shower units and will be ordering that soon. That's also got a nine to ten week build period, so probably looking at getting both of those things in in August. And then, the Innovation Summit is coming up next week, the twenty-first is a dinner and twenty-second is an all-day conference that's, I guess, being sponsored by MNS Health. It's up at the Fairgrounds in Lake Worth and there's apparently still room if people would like to attend it. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. And councilmember Bennett?
Again, I, along with councilmember Kramer, I attended the APC meeting earlier this week and it was a good report, thank you. The day after our last council meeting, on Friday, the twenty-fifth, I attended two ceremonies at Lake County Campus at Willow College. One was for certificate ceremony and the other was for commencement ceremony. Had a great turnout, it was great seeing not just our youngsters, but people in their forties and fifties probably, receiving their diplomas, their AAs. It was a good turnout and there were two high school students that received, they're AAs, before they graduated from high school that day. One from Middletown and one from here in Clear Lake. It was just, that's, you know, think about it, that's awesome. The Lake County Community Campus is working hand in hand with our high schools and it's very rewarding to see that. I was asked to bring forward the City of Clear Lake Animal Control that's having a BAWA luau. It's a spay and neuter fundraiser. It's kind of fits into our earlier discussions. On Saturday, August eighteenth, it'll be at the Clear Lake Senior Community Center, five P.M. until eleven P.M. Tickets are available to Tina Veramani's, Marcia Taylor, who takes care of our licensing, John Moretz, our animal control officer, and Charming Welder, volunteer. So, any and all, welcome to attend it.
Councilmember Overton?
Okay, well, I don't have a lot. Everybody's kind of mentioned, I'm not going to read, but I do want to put out a special thanks to councilmember Kramer for all his hard work on getting our evacuation center set up. He's there all the time checking on things and making sure that everything keeps moving forward. He's worked really hard. I really think he deserves a real special thank you for all that he's doing for that community center. Also, as we said, we had our solars are not quite completely finalized, but they're getting on there, but those community center has all due. Everything's working really well, hopefully. Everything's working real well. We had a little visit today, we're hoping it doesn't have anything to do with that, but it's working really well. The air conditioning and everything, they're all on electronic timers, so the city employee, whoever's over that can actually adjust if somebody calls them, they're having an event and they can't do it, they can actually adjust it by internet. So, that's kind of cool. Everything's going that way, it was kind of interesting. They're going to train me on it, so we had to learn all that stuff. So, and then talk about the C.C. for C. about, I just noticed that they were there taking care of the flowers when you guys had your little meet and greet the other day and they're great. I mean, they're just everywhere. Every time I turn around, I see them on the highway, I see them over by Walmart and that, I see them down here. I said they are a great group. I just wanted to know, I really appreciate them highly. We also have an event with Highland Senior Center. This is going to be a very important event, is our annual dinner. It's our biggest fundraiser that we have and that's on September the eighth. Tickets are now available, but it's even more important this year than ever before because we just received, the funding was cut there, thirty-five thousand dollars for us. So, where I was explaining on expanding our programs to seniors to serve in different locations, we have now been cut back to the point that we need to raise the money if we're going to be able to do that. So, you know, appreciate all the help we sell out. We do have our senator and our summary woman, both are going to be speakers at that event, so hopefully that will help bring in some extra people to come and have dinner with them also. And I have one thing to add on to an agenda item, if you want me to do that now. And I have one thing to add on to an agenda item, if you wanted to do that now or later?
I mean, go ahead, Russ.
I'd like to bring back a discussion on our agenda, to talk about how many council members we have on each one of our committees.
All right, and then we have a do-over down here with Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, I appreciate the expression gratitude to what I've done. It reminded me that I, there is a person that's been helping out on this project with the transfer switch installation and the generator, he's been invaluable to me because I, what I know about electricity is fairly limited. Dave Rogers has spent an awful lot of time, he's volunteered down there, he's got his little backhoe down there now, doing some excavating in preparation for the transfer switch, so I just wanted to make sure that Dave is recognized also for what he's been doing on it. So that's what I had.
All right, so I've been out of town for a period, or out of state for a period of time and upon returning, I did attend the graduation at Carley High where I presented a scholarship through my corporation to a young lady named Tara Denson, fantastic shooting star, young lady, and she's going to go far in life and really appreciated getting to do that. I did have some communication with the Chamber of Commerce and looking at establishing rate schedules for utilization of that facility as a venue and they're going to be coming to you probably regularly now for negotiating some terms of that and bringing up some different aspects that need to be addressed, but utilizing that facility as a venue would be advantageous as soon as we possibly can, I think. And my, my daughter was married, so I did attend that, it was pretty, pretty good for the Harris family to acquire or send them on. And I did sit in on the Measure V meeting, I sat in the background and listened, it was informative to get an update of where people feel like concerns are and that sort of thing, so it's always good to understand and weigh those concerns. I just want to make mention of the Mario slash Silks building and other buildings in the city that have been demoed in the last couple of years, and I just want to say that how much I appreciate the amount of effort that's put into that. There's clearly something different and unique happening in our community, whether it's the efforts that are being put forth in obtaining the demolition of some of those blighted buildings and the new economic developments coming into our city, that is a direct result of having the right people in place and making, taking the efforts necessary, and I very much appreciate all the efforts that are being taken. So that concludes my report, and then I just wanted to see if there's any future agenda items.